Good evening. We're going to call up to order the Monday, November 18th, 2024 Regular Board of Education Meeting for Marion City Schools. Before we say the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Swanger.
So, we like to recognize those staff members that we know that have passed away. And so, in the last month, there have been two of them. So, the first one is Lois Lutz. Lois Lutz was a phys ed teacher at Baker Middle School. She was actually my phys ed teacher for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And so, I remember lots of things about her. She was actually a graduate of the University of Findlay. She taught physical education in Marion City Schools for 31 years. She and her husband enjoyed traveling throughout the United States, visited many foreign countries as well. She was an avid sports fan, especially fond of the Winfield Royal Basketball, Ohio State Football and Basketball. And I can attest, she was also very meticulous about her lawn, because when I would walk my dog, I would walk by. And I remember one time I walked by and I said hi to her and I said, "I'm Kathy Swanger." She goes, "I know who you are." And so, at that time, she was like in her late 80s, but we could see her out with her scissors, cutting her lawn. And if a leaf would fall, she would go pick up leaf by leaf and put them away. So, she passed away. And the other one is Papa James. And I'll be honest, I didn't know Papa had a first name until I read his obituary, because we always referred to him as Papa James. But it is John James. He was a graduate of Wilmington College. He got his master's degree from the Ashland University. He actually played both tennis and football during high school and college. He started his teaching career in industrial arts and coached football at Miami Trace. And he also coached football for Wilmington College and New Mexico State University. Eventually, he returned to Ohio, where he coached football and taught at Marion City Schools for 20 years. He enjoyed snowmobiling, lengthy motorcycle trips with his family, and eventually, when he couldn't do those things anymore, his hobbies included woodworking, toll painting, and sheet metal work. And so, we just want to recognize those two former employees of Marion City Schools.
Ms. Lutz had 31 years of service. Mr. James had 20 years of service. So, I'd ask that we have a moment of silence of 31 years, the longest of the two staff members, after the Pledge of Allegiance. So, if we can rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Madam Treasurer, can we call the roll, please?
Mr. Ratliff.
Is that me? Here.
Mr. Ratliff.
I didn't hear you.
Mr. Wibling.
Here.
Mrs. Dyer.
Here.
Ms. Swanger.
President.
Mr. Guyer.
Here.
Item three is the Superintendent's Report 3A is the summer camp video. Mr. Superintendent.
Good evening. Actually, before we do that, I'd love to start out recognizing some of our students that have accomplished so many amazing things this year. So, it is actually in the business section, but because we are recommending board action on the proclamations to recognize these students, we'd love the President Ratliff to move those up.
Yep. I guess call of the agenda would be to move items, the proclamations, that each one of us has one of those, to up to the Superintendent's Report at this time, so we can recognize them first. I'd make a motion to move that.
Second.
Any objections? Any further discussion? Couldn't you call the roll and move that?
Mr. Ratliff.
Yes.
Ms. Swanger.
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer.
Yes.
Mr. Guyer.
Yes.
Mr. Wibling.
Yes.
Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Ratliff. First, we'd like to call up Jackson Shipley. Jackson here. Jackson's going up. So, at this time, I'd love for the proclamation to be read by Ms. Swanger.
This is honoring Jackson Shipley for outstanding athletic achievement, whereas the Marion City School Board of Education is committed to recognizing exceptional achievement and celebrating the accomplishment of our students in athletics. And whereas, Jackson Shipley, a student athlete at the Marion City School District, has earned multiple honors for his outstanding performance in both soccer and football during the 2024 athletic season. And whereas, Jackson's talent, dedication, and commitment to excellence have earned him the distinguished titles in MOAC First Team in Soccer, MOAC First Team in Football, and Central District Second Team in Football. And whereas, these achievements are a testament to Jackson's skill, perseverance, and versatility as an athlete, and as well as his dedication to representing our district with pride, sportsmanship, and integrity. And whereas, Jackson's accomplishments serve as an inspiration to his teammates, peers, and the entire Marion community, highlighting the strength of our student athletes and the importance of hard work and dedication. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Marion City School District Board of Education does hereby extend its sincere congratulations to Jackson Shipley for his remarkable achievement in both soccer and football. We commend his exemplary athletic performance, his dedication to his sports, and his representation of the values of our school district. Be it further resolved, that a copy of this proclamation be presented to Jackson Shipley as a symbol of our appreciation and pride in his accomplishments, as well as a reminder of the positive impact of his talent and dedication on our district.
So, Jackson, if you would go to the back, we have a couple more of these to do, and at the end, we'd love to get some pictures with you, okay? All right, next, can I have Jayla Woods? Jayla's already sporting her Tiffin gear, I see. All right, at this time, I'd like to have a board member read the proclamation, please.
All right. This evening, we are honoring Jayla Woods for her outstanding achievement in volleyball. Whereas, the Marion City School District Board of Education proudly recognizes student achievements, especially those that reflect dedication, skill, and sportsmanship in athletics. And whereas, Jayla Woods, a talented and dedicated volleyball player at Marion Harding High School in the Marion City School District, has been honored with multiple distinctions for her exceptional performance during the 2024 volleyball season. And whereas, Jayla's hard work and athletic prowess have earned her the titles of MOAC First Team in Volleyball and District 11 Second Team in Volleyball, reflecting her commitment to excellence and her contribution to the success of her team. And whereas, these awards stand as a testament to Jayla's skill, dedication, and determination on the court, and she serves as an outstanding example of resilience, leadership, and teamwork within our district. And whereas, Jayla's accomplishments bring to her teammates, coaches, school, and the entire Marion community, highlighting the positive impact of student athletes on the culture and spirit of our schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Marion City School District Board of Education does hereby extend its heartfelt congratulations to Jayla Woods for her remarkable achievements in volleyball. We commend her athletic talent, her dedication to her sport, and her exemplary representation of our district's values. Be it further resolved, that a copy of this proclamation be presented to Jayla Woods as a token of our admiration and pride of her accomplishments, as well as an encouragement for her continued success. Congratulations, Jayla.
Next, Leah Price.
We know you love being in front of people, so just bear with me. Honoring Leah Price for outstanding achievement in cross country. Whereas, the Marion City School District Board of Education is committed to celebrating the dedication and achievements of our student athletes who excel in their sports. And whereas, Leah Price, a dedicated and accomplished member of the Marion Hardings Cross Country Team, has been recognized for her excellence in the sport by earning the distinguished title of MOAC First Team in Cross Country for the 2024 season. And whereas, Leah's achievement is a testament to her hard work, perseverance, and determination, as well as her commitment to training and excelling in cross country, representing her school and district with pride. And whereas, Leah's accomplishment serves as an inspiration to her teammates, peers, and the entire Marion community, exemplifying the values of resilience, sportsmanship, and leadership that our district holds dearly. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Marion City School District Board of Education does hereby extend its sincere congratulations to Leah Price for her remarkable achievements in cross country. We commend her dedication, athleticism, and outstanding representation of our district and its values. Be it further resolved, that a copy of this proclamation be presented to Leah Price as a symbol of our pride in her accomplishments and as an encouragement for her continued success in athletics and beyond. Congratulations.
Justin Long.
Honoring Justin Long for outstanding achievement in football. Whereas, the Marion City School Board of Education is committed to recognizing the exceptional accomplishments of our student athletes who demonstrate talent, hard work, and sportsmanship. And whereas, Justin Long, a dedicated member of the Harding High School Football Team, has been honored with multiple prestigious awards, earning a place on both the MOAC First Team in Football and the Central District First Team in Football for the 2024 season. Staple got me right there, Justin. Whereas, these achievements reflect Justin's exceptional skills, dedication, and perseverance on the field, as well as his commitment to excellence in his role as a leader and inspiration to his teammates and peers. And whereas, Justin's accomplishments bring pride to his team, coaches, school, and the entire Marion community, highlighting the positive impact of his hard work and the value of athletics in developing character, discipline, and resilience. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Marion City School District Board of Education does hereby extend its heartfelt congratulations to Justin Long for his outstanding achievements in football. We commend his athletic talent, dedication to his sport, and exemplary representation of the values and spirit of the Marion City Schools. Be it therefore resolved, that a copy of this proclamation be presented to Justin Long as a symbol of our pride and admiration for his accomplishments and as an encouragement for his continued success in football and beyond, adopted this 18th day of November 2024 by the Marion City School Board. Thank you.
Aviana Redman. I don't think Aviana could be here tonight, but I'd love to take action still.
Honoring Aviana Redman for artistic achievement. Whereas, the Marion City Schools District Board of Education picked pride in recognizing outstanding accomplishments and celebrating the talents of our students. And whereas, Aviana Redman, a dedicated student at Marion Harding High School, has earned the esteemed honor of having her artwork selected to display at the prestigious 2024 to '26 Ohio House, Ohio House School Student Art Exhibition. Whereas, this prestigious, I can't talk in that, is sponsored by the Ohio Arts Council and the Ohio House of Representatives, providing a unique platform for showcasing the talents of young artists across the state of Ohio. And whereas, Aviana's artwork was chosen from among the finest student submissions statewide to represent our district, one of only 99 artworks selected to represent each district in Ohio and will be displayed at the Vern Riffey Center for Government and the Arts, an esteemed venue in the heart of our state's capital. And whereas, this achievement reflects Aviana's exceptional creativity, dedication, and skill, and serves as an inspiration to her peers and our entire school community, highlighting the importance of arts education in the development of student potential. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Marion City School Board of Education does hereby extend its heartfelt congratulations to Aviana Redman on this significant artistic achievement. We commend her talent, hard work, and commitment to the excellence in the art, and we thank her for proudly representing the Marion City School District and our community on a statewide level. Be it further resolved, that a copy of this proclamation be presented to Aviana as a token of our appreciation and in recognition of her accomplishments, as well as a reminder of the positive impact of her talent and creativity.
President Ratliff, I would recommend bundling, bundling these, then the board taking action. And then, I'd love to take a couple minutes, go back and take a few pictures with the students.
Yep. I'd make a motion that these proclamations for Aviana Redman, Jackson Shipley, Ms. Woods, Ms. Price, and Mr. Long be adopted.
Second.
Any further discussion? I know as far as Ms. Woods.
Shipley, too. Shipley.
Yeah. Mr. Shipley was in there, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. But with Ms. Woods, I got curious, because I heard she was going to Tiffin. I actually looked it up and have all the volleyball players that will play across the country, only 5.9% of volleyball players go on to play at the next level. So, it's a very prestigious group. I was just kind of curious at that. So, congratulations to her. So, yeah. All right, so let's take, do we do the roll call?
Do we do? All right. Mr. Ratliff.
Yes.
Mr. Guyer.
Yes.
Ms. Swanger.
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer.
Yes.
Mr. Wibling.
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, everyone. Yeah. Obviously, with those outstanding student athletes, just to comment, obviously, we're very proud of them with those proclamations. And the board is trying to do more of the student recognition, especially since Ms. Dyer joined the board as being our representative. So, I appreciate her. Obviously, she brought forward Ms. Redman, and I think Sean, Mr. Kern's brought forward the other athletes. But we try to do a better job as a board of recognizing our students. I appreciate all that these people do. Obviously, when they go out and represent us in the community, it's very prideful for us to see their accomplishments and success, because they are representing us and the entire Marion community. So, back to 3A. Mr. Murphy, you have the floor, sir.
Do I have some awards? You want me to wait till my actual section?
Are they here?
No.
Okay. So, maybe we can do it at the end, if they're not here. If they're here, I'd like.
I didn't know you were trying to bundle them all.
No, I'd like to do it. I think he wanted to do that, so if they had places to go, they could take.
Okay, cool.
And they did. They had places to go. They all asked for it.
I do know the Soccer Banquet is tonight, two doors down.
Oh, is that okay?
So, I know Jackson went to the.
Yeah, yeah. Very interesting.
3A is the summer camp.
Yeah, so Marsha Pitts is here. I'm going to invite Marsha up. And Marsha can say a couple words about the CT Summer Camp video, and then we'd like to show that, to show the success of that to the Board of Education.
So, before you watch the video, I just want to preface, like, when we think of our schools in the summer, you pretty much think of kids who have to come in the summer to make up credits, kids who have to come in the summer because they maybe didn't get hit the marks that they needed to meet during the school year. But we had a grant, a summer learning opportunity grant, that was originally for the high school, and I petitioned the Department of Education to allow us to take the grant monies down to our lower grade levels. And really, what you're going to see here is students that don't have to be here, but students who want to be here in the summer. So, it's changing the dynamic of thinking about summer as just for remediation. But everything that you'll see in this, too, was academic that our students were doing. But these are students and families who made the choice to send their kids in to us for the summer, just to expose them to different career exploration, different things in music. You'll see in the video what was shared. But we had 191 students who partook in one of our camps, and it's just sort of reframing what we think about our buildings and the use of buildings during the summertime. So, I just want to set that before you watch the video. And then, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them when the video is done. Is the sound on?
My name is Ms. Davis, and I am the Business Marketing Pathway Instructor here at Harding High School. This summer, the Business Marketing Pathway hosted two series of summer camps for Marion City students, grades three through five and six through eight. The first camp was Entrepreneurship Bootcamp, where students came in and they just learned some basics and the fundamentals of business, and then they learned how to write a business plan for an actual product, which they later created a product prototype for during their three-day camp. The other camp that we hosted was Girls in Business and Marketing. So, pretty similar to Entrepreneurship Bootcamp, the girls came in, they learned how to write business plans, they created an app that solved a problem in their everyday lives or within their community, and then they built a prototype of that app. They learned how to design a logo for their app, and then they actually ended up writing business plans for that as well.
Hi, I'm Grace Hand, and I'm the program coordinator for the micro farm out here. This year, we had several farm camps out here and at the high school. We had second through sixth graders join us for a total of six days at camps. Some of our activities were making ice cream and butter. We had beekeepers come. We harvested some produce out here and taste tested it. They planted some stuff out here. We made soil bombs for them to take home. They potted some house plants and stuff like that. So, we're hoping to be able to do those again next summer.
Hello, I'm Mr. Potcutter, engineering manufacturing instructor at Harding High School. This past summer, we had a two-day camp for junior high students, current seventh and eighth graders. They spent two days here doing a number of different activities and had some different learning opportunities. Students spent time 3D modeling and three-pinning some designs, also had some time to laser cut some acrylic pieces, keychains, to be exact. And students also spent time with different challenges, which included a pizza box challenge, a balloon car, ping pong launchers, and finally wrapped it up with some mousetrap car activities. It was a fun two days. Students had a great time and a lot of learning along the way.
So, I'd like to note a couple things you saw at the end. So, first of all, a student, actually, one of the marketing students actually created the, did work-based learning hours to create the video that you just watched. Several of the students got work-based learning hours, working at the camps or on the micro farm. So, that's our pillar four now on work-based learning. So, we actually got a jump start on that prior to it being its actual own part of the pillar. But just the opportunities that they had, and they had different experiences throughout the camps, that they had the opportunity to work and actually embed some of that. So, being able to utilize them as work-based learning. One of the students actually did some of the schedules for the Harding Athletic Department that you saw. Lydia, who just was up here being recognized for her athleticism, actually is one of our marketing students, and she actually did work for Maywak for our Business Advisory Council and developed the one pager that is being handed out to all businesses. So, the work our students, that they're doing is not just for the work-based learning, but it's that community connection piece of pillar four, too, that our partners being involved in some of the work that we're doing with our students. So.
Plans for next summer?
That's why I wanted to just show you the video, because we got to figure out, that was a grant, the grant is gone. But it's about like utilizing funds to actually do opportunities, things like this, because everything the students did was academic.
And our families, did they have to pay for any of those camps?
Because we're free of charge to our students. We did not provide transportation. That was one thing we were not able to do, is to provide transportation like we do.
So, how do we meet? I know we got a grant, right? What do you think it takes in funding to run those same exact programs that we did last year?
So, you have to pay for the staff. That's the one thing. And we did pay the students for their work-based learning, the student workers. A lot of the things we got, we actually were allowed to use, like, some of our funds. So, we actually have things that were not consumable. So, there are things we'll be able to reuse for hopefully in the future, having more of these. I mean, the micro farm itself, I mean, you pretty much need, we just need seed and things like that. But a lot of that's low cost. Some of the things are consumable, as far as some of the things that they were able to take home, so some supplies. But really, it's more funding the, paying the staff to be there, and then hopefully having opportunities for paid experiences for students.
Do you know what that total cost estimation is?
I would have to look at it. I would have, I have it, because I know what we put out to, like, what we had to have. The salary for staff went through MTC, the students. I actually need to total up our work-based learning hours, because I'm getting that for our dashboard, as far as, because those are students, some of them were people who are going to be seniors. But all the work-based learning starts as freshmen, so it cumulates, cumulative over the four years. So, when you hear about that 250 hours, it's not a one-and-done in one year. They can start accruing those their freshman year. So, and then also, I wanted to point out, too, all the demographics, so because it was a grant, I had to collect that. It's very interesting, because the demographics that we hit are in every pretty much subgroup you want to tell me. We had kids in that, of the 191, we probably hit kids from every demographic for, like, and that was pre-K through eighth grade of who we had actually attending anything. But.
Yeah, because I think, I mean, my daughter attended one of the camps. I thought it was phenomenal. So, what you guys did with Mr. Hayner and Ms. Delfora was phenomenal. I mean, it was way above any expectation I had when my daughter went to the actual camp. The material she brought home was quality. I think you guys even had gift cards in some of them. I think she had a Google gift card or something that she brought home, or Amazon or something. I was like, where are you getting this stuff from? And it was from our camps.
From the grant.
So, I didn't even know it was, I mean, the quality was beyond expectation for me. I think sadly, I think it said 190-some kids. It's too bad we didn't have more kids in it. And if it's transportation, I think we need to figure out how to get them here, because it was phenomenal, for at least her experience. I think, Mr. Guyer, you had your kids.
I think our daughter was here more than she was at home, because that's the kind she attended, so.
Yeah, it was excellent. And I think now with our extracurricular, being able, them and the schools, maybe they can get the information out, and we can get more kids signed up this year than we ever have. can get the information out, we can get more kids signed up this year than we ever have. But obviously, we got the funding piece, but I'm all for seeing what we can do to make those happen again. I thought they were tremendous. Job well done on those.
And I would just say, almost 200 students for the first time that we did it.
Yeah.
It's pretty darn good. And I think that's, that's just a starting point. That's not where, I mean, we can obviously grow this and grow this again. I think of funding also, so alternate funding sources. I wonder if there's anything that Marion Community Foundation has, that Marion Community Foundation, even if we do like micro grants or different things that they offer, if there's some way that we can tap into some of their funds to also help, just as a suggestion for alternate.
Another thing I'd like to mention is that a couple buzzwords were mentioned. Work-based learning is part of our, one of our goals for the district. And I think the other thing is, as we talk about workforce development, you guys, everybody talks about that is a priority, it needs to be a priority of this district. It's all about prioritizing workforce development as well. Why Marsha's standing up here as well, I'd like to mention an event I attended last Wednesday. And I believe it was sponsored by Can Do, but there was other, a couple of other sponsors as well.
Job and Families, Ohio Job and...
Ohio Job and Families, yep. And we had over 100-plus in attendance, I think it was around 120 people or so in attendance. Thank you for, Mr. Guyer, for being there for that as well. We had a lot of local business leaders there, we had potential future business leaders there as well, we had site selectors there as well, and we had a lot of other Marion City school staff that had a chance to attend that as well. And it was all about why Marion. Why is Marion the place that business should be attracted to? And we had three Level III logistics students do a 30-minute presentation about why Marion, and it was a hit. I mean, they did a fabulous job. And since then, I believe we're up to five or six requests now, where they're asking for these three kids to come out and present rotary, coladas, what else?
Chamber of Commerce.
Marion Tech is another one.
Chamber of Commerce, and then the television station is going to have them.
Yeah, I saw Ms. Jones from the Chamber of Commerce, she said your students hit it out of the park. She said it was tremendous, everybody loved it, so.
Lot of energy in the room, and I give a lot of credit to Dustin Ellis, the work that he's put into these kids and Marsha as well. And it was just a great experience, so many people came up afterward and just had true appreciation for, I think, I don't know, the climate, the culture of the room was good. It was just great. And I had the opportunity to speak in the beginning and at the end, and I was just happy to be a part of it, and tells me why I'm here in Marion.
But unfortunately, we didn't record it.
We will, they've got five more takes.
We didn't get that recording.
But I would just, that's where, like, that's important, because really we were doing, using that as exposure to our kids about like what marketing is, what agriculture is, things like that. So it's the opportunity, and again, it's that want to, not have to.
Yep.
And just for an example, because Mr. Guyer mentioned Lydia, he was there the day, she was begging us to add it, we added a day because the kids wanted to come back another day, so we added days, and she was standing there, "Oh." And I was like, well, we can, because we had the money and the grant, but you saw that, they wanted more, that wasn't even enough, they wanted to stay longer, so we actually added a day to that.
How many camps did we have?
We had different farm camps, we had the different, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, maybe nine, maybe nine different camps, I believe. Like robotics, so like, for example, I know when my grant, I know I can offer robotics, because I wrote it into the grant for this year, so I can use grant funds for the robotics. Ms. Holden wanted to have one, but because she was going away to so much training last summer, she wasn't able to hold a robotics camp, but like, we already have plans, that is funded, I have that built into that, and we have a partnership with MTC for that, but yes.
And those went all the way up till the end of July, right?
Um, into mid, about mid-July, about mid-July, yeah. So, yeah, I just, like I said, I wanted to share it with you, just in the mindset of a different take on what we do for summer programming.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
So with the three, Level III Logistics kids, circle back around them, they do those other presentations, we'll sure to send invites for you guys to make it out, maybe we can get one of those recorded.
Yeah, that'd be good, that'd be good. Well, I heard it was such a hit, like...
Oh, it was unbelievable.
I wish we had it recorded, so we can see it and keep playing it, yeah.
You would have thought it was a presentation that had been just done every year, with the energy in the room, I thought, and the people and the support afterwards, people were just truly excited to be a part of it, I thought, so.
Yeah, I thought it was just to see our kids execute in front of such a diverse group of people, that are very influential into making sure that this community goes in the direction we want it to. Our kids were a part of that, and that was just outstanding, so.
Just, Mr. President, just a couple of other things in my report. Enrollment update, you know, that's another priority in the district, we'll let you know in November. We've had 32 new students enroll, we've had 24 students withdraw, we are tracking that, we put a new process in place around some of that stuff. So we are plus eight in November thus far. The new enrollees, we had 23 at the elementary, fourth to middle school, and we had five at the high school. The other thing I'd like to report out on, as part of our strategy, district strategic plan, we continue to build off of that. You know, we have our district goals, we have the pillars, the board objectives, in addition to our four goals, you really have six goals built into the four. Proud to report that every school in the district now has built out their strategic plan for their building, that is now aligned to the district strategic plan. The next steps that we're taking now will be our departments, all of our cabinet leaders will be building out their strategic plans for those department to support first and foremost, the district strategic plan, and then in addition to other items that would fall underneath one of the four pillars as well. So that's in process as well. So at some point, we can give you a presentation regarding the comprehensive strategic plan as well, we're in process of building out some dashboards for the data tracking as well. So that is not just the work of one, that's the work of many. I can tell you, some of our cabinet people in the room have been a big part of that. Gary Lee Ogden has been a significant part of helping the schools build theirs out, Julie's here, you got Jake here, Sean's here, it's been a team effort, and it's a process, and it's a learning process, but I can tell you, we're learning it quick. So I'm very happy with the progress that we're making around some of that stuff. And as some of you know, and I said, there's always going to be things at a district meeting that I will continue to repeat over and over and over again, and people will not hear me stop talking about it. It's always going to be culture, organizational health, operations, what we do about structure, systems, and process, and what our strategy is. Those three things together is a success, a recipe for success. So we will continue to work on those things and get better each and every day.
Thank you. Item four, Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Mr. President, I have my actually final video of Love Your School initiative. I heard you make a statement, and I was just talking with Brian earlier this evening about recording and what's going on in our schools. And I just shared with Brian, with this being my last video of Love Your School, my next initiative is getting, continue to get into our buildings, snapping videos and snapshots. So my monthly to you will be our district in a nutshell of what's going on within that month that I was able to capture. What you're going to hear, not necessarily see, so you can just rest your eyes and use your ears, and it's going to be Harding Love Your School and a poetry reading.
Two roads diverge in Harding's Hall, and sorry, I could not travel both, and being one traveler, I felt a lull and looked for stories upon which to call, to the stage, the courtyard with undergrowth. Then I looked at the other, just as fair, and having perhaps the better view, because it was lively, fun stories there, though as for writing with much care, I knew exactly what to do. And both that morning equally lay with pages and pencils, much insight, a decision building upon each day, to read, to write, to listen, to say, my mind fills with creative might. I shall be telling this with a sigh, and ideas grow for others, hence, two roads diverge in Harding's Hall, and I, I took the one less traveled by, and that has made all the difference.
Mr. President, that concludes my Assistant Superintendent for the night.
Thank you. Do we know who the poetry was written by?
It was a teacher, but I can get that, we wanted to have it actually for you. So I can tell you the voice is Amy Dunmire. I don't know if Amy Dunmire wrote the poem, but I can tell you the voice is Amy Dunmire, who is an English teacher at Harding.
Very good, very good. Item five on the agenda is the Treasurers' Report. Motion, 5A is motion to approve the board amendments from October 7th and the 21st. I'll make a motion to approve those.
Second.
Any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weibling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swonger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Item 5B is motion to approve the following financial items, October checks, October fund balances, and the October financial report. I'll make a motion to approve those.
Second.
Any discussion?
Said a couple of questions on the checks, had a couple of big ticket items come through, Capital One Public Fund, is that a one-time fee?
That's our, we have a loan for some work that was done several years ago, and that's the loan payment.
Makes sense on that one, and the other one was the K Group, I believe, the K Company?
I'd have to look that one up.
I just saw those are kind of our two bigger two names.
I could look that up, but no, I'll just know.
The K Company?
The K Company.
Just the letter K?
Letter K.
She'll get back to you on those. Anything that you need to hold up approving that?
Okay.
Any further discussion? Call and roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Swonger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weibling?
Yes.
5C is a motion to approve the fiscal year '25 through fiscal year '29, five-year forecast as submitted. Any comments on that?
I have a little brief presentation for you.
Yep.
All right. So this is, this is just the basics on the current fiscal year. Our beginning cash balance was just over 25 million, and projecting our ending cash balance just to be under 23 million. So that makes our projected loss for the year about 2.2 million. This is the definite trend that we are in, is that we are spending more than we are bringing in. And it, you know, it gets worse each year as expenses are added. Now, the assumptions are based on all current staffing, so there's, you know, and all of our current expenditures. So there are some, we are working on some, talking about some things that we're, we can do to reduce expenditures. But for now, what this forecast is showing is where we are this very minute, without making any changes. Here's just a snapshot of our revenue. Local taxes, we've taken about 10 and a half million, state funding, you know, over 46 million, and then other revenue about 2.4. So you see, you know, our local taxpayers pick up 18% of the revenue that we bring in, and state picks up 78%. So that's a, so everything that we do with our enrollment and everything that affects our state funding, so every, every student that we enroll, that we have in this district is crucial to our revenue. Expenditures, again, personnel costs, 81% of our total budget, which is, you know, it's, it's gone up, I think, 1% from last year, but that is obviously the vast majority of our expenditures. As we look at things to possibly trim around, to adjust the budget, we can trim purchase services, we can trim other expenditures, which is supplies and things, but the significant impact is in personnel. Unfortunately, that's the way it works, so. Here's a lovely little chart that shows, so 2024 actual is that first column, the blue is revenue, the orange is the expenditures, so we had, you know, more revenue than expenditures, but that changes in the current year we're in, and it just gets significantly worse at this point in the projections, because of the revenues are not increasing at the same rate the expenditures are. So it just gets worse, and so when we project out in 2029, we would be out of money and in a negative, if we didn't do anything right now to fix that, which we will do something to fix that, but. So this is just, you know, so this shows that change in revenue, we're less than 1% change in revenue historically and projected. Our change in expenditures, though, projected is 6%, so that just doesn't quite equal out, so that's one of those, what we have to work on. The days cash on hand, this is a, something that is important to watch. At the end of fiscal year 2024, which was June 30th, we had 168 days cash on hand, and that's, so, you know, that's, we could cover expenses for five months if we didn't have any other revenue. And so then, you know, at the end of this year, we're still in good shape, it's just projecting out, you know, if we don't make any changes, then, then we would run out of money. So that's why we're starting to look at, you know, what we can do now to make sure that we keep the healthier cash balance and that we don't run out of funds. This is the projected, or historical and projected enrollment. Right now, the 2025 is 3801, that is what we were funded at in October. You know, there are, there will be variances, you know, we have kids enroll and kids leave throughout the year, so we're hoping that that, we stay at least there, if not, get better. But since our trend has been that we've lost students each year, that's what I am projecting at this point. If we, if we're able to turn that trend around, then that would also change my revenue projections in the future. So this is, just, I'm a very, I'm very cautious and conservative in my forecast, especially on the revenue side, so. That's based, that's where we're getting the enrollment numbers, that's basically losing approximately 40 kids a year. So this slide shows our general fund per people expenditures, so as, you know, the per people expenditures, because our expenditures are showing that they're going up, but our enrollment's going down, so that would mean that we would be spending more per pupil. Again, we will definitely work on regulating that. Daily, so our daily cost per, per each student is $90. And so the state picks up 89% of that, and then our local taxpayers pick up 11% of that, $90. So this is just a, from the forecast that was filed in May, this is the variances from that, I, the projected revenue is up by about half a million dollars, but expenditures are up by more than that. So that was the changes from May. It's mostly salary and benefits is the majority of the expense. See that on the bottom in the yellow? This, this next slide, this is the summary forecast, you know, without all the individual lines. We've got the lovely little chart, shows our cash balance going down, down, down with that, that line, and the actual numbers there on the bottom, so you look at the revenue, surplus or deficit, we are negative every year, and so, and then that shows that negative by the, by 2029, a negative cash balance, which we obviously cannot get there. So the, I hope you took time to look at the forecast assumptions that were put in the file, that, that details every single line of the forecast, all the different pieces that go in there, and that's available also, anybody can access that public, and then it'll be filed, I'll be filing that tomorrow with the state, so that'll be out there for, that anyone can access. So it's very, very detailed, and lots of interesting charts and things. So I think it makes it easier for people to understand, instead of me just talking at it, it's easier to read it, I think. at it. It's easier to read it, I think, and understand it a little better. So, is there any other, um, any specific questions or information that you would like me to share?
Do we, when's our, this year we have contract negotiations, MEA?
That's correct.
Do you know when those are?
Well, when, I don't know, I don't know when we normally start those here, so, probably spring.
I would think we'd probably start in spring.
Yeah.
March, April, somewhere around there.
Cause I think, I think we'll... I'd like it sooner, but it's probably smarter than afterwards, this board have a serious discussion on how we're gonna slow the loss.
Right.
Obviously, we need to get and take care of our teachers and their contract negotiations, and then from there, depending on how those go, I mean, right now, we have a $2 million deficit that's gonna keep going.
Right.
So that would give, I guess, Mr. Murphy and yourself, working with the cabinet, April, May, hopefully, you know, we're looking at a six-month period to then maybe report back to us what we need to do to start trimming things.
Right, yeah, we've started those conversations, and we will definitely include you on, you know, decisions made. Um, one of the things I have, like, I think the cabinet probably gets sick of hearing me say this, cause anytime we start discussing things about a different program, our summer programming, that's not included in here.
Correct.
So, every time somebody says, "Well, I think it'd be great if we could do this, if we could do that," and I'm like, "Okay, where are we gonna, where are we gonna..."
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta take it from somewhere else, just that, that thought always has to be kept in mind. And also, we have a renewal levy in 2026, we need to have put that on the ballot in 2026, so which will be very important as well.
But that's a, that's a renewal in the current funding that we add.
Right, right, the renewal, no change in.
Like 89 or something is the last time we passed the levy to increase funding?
It's been a long time.
Yeah. So we've done well for a number of years, and I, I just wanna make sure, before we ever ask the community for additional funds, we're taking care of what they already give us. So I think we need to do the best we can to trim whatever we can to be within our means on a priority level of what the district feels is important.
I agree.
I don't know how we prioritize that at this point, but I'd like to hear some ideas after, uh, the negotiations, because we have to take care of our staff. So, after that, hopefully, you guys can come to us with ideas on how we're gonna prioritize. Uh, hopefully, we can have a balanced budget after that takes care of it, but that would be a lot of trimming, so I don't know. I know Mr. Murphy has a lot of experience in that at Toledo Public. They've had to do it quite a bit during the course of his career, but we need to either get balanced or slow it significantly.
Exactly.
Because, obviously.
What you said.
I, that's, I'm, I'm with, I'm with you.
But I mean, I would like to start that process as soon as we can.
We've already started conversations, yes.
And did you, did you, cause you said several times, "Which we will," or "We'll get there," or...
Yes.
Whatever. I know you're optimistic, but it's not...
Well, I, I, I just, it's, I'm not doing my job if I don't, if I don't keep that to the forefront and let, you know, people know, you know, we've got to do something, and if we don't do it...
So you think?
We can't run this school district, so.
Are you thinking cuts in personnel, or just not say anything until we get a plan? Or because to me, you know?
I think there's various areas that we're gonna have to look at. Just, you know, but, you know, that's where, that's where we're a team, you know, I don't have the knowledge of what staff we need where. That's not, that's not my specialty, that's why you have, you know, the other, so, well, that's why we're working together. You know, it has, we have to make these decisions as a team.
Well, will we be able to negotiate if we're not to?
What I'm asking is, I think with the experience we have, they can take care of our staff and personnel. With this in mind, obviously, because that's March, April, and then after that is taken care of, we'll know what position we're in for a number of years with MEA at that point. Then for them to come back to us, maybe the next board meeting after that, and, and kind of present some ideas of what they believe the priorities are, and see if the board's in line with the same priorities, and we can look at all the options that the team between Superintendent Trezor's gonna have to come up with, because obviously, we're in the red, you know?
You don't think we're digging ourselves deeper to negotiate without having?
Well, I think they're gonna go in, what I'm saying is they go...
There will be some semblance of a plan, and some, I mean, we'll have some ideas
And I think they, they understand where we're at money-wise when they go to negotiate, so, and I think MEA will understand, but.
And when, when you create a five-year forecast, I mean, a couple of things are going into this. So, part of the change in our revenue is the loss of ESER money.
Yes.
And we have supplanted a lot of positions using that ESER money that we are now bringing back under our own fold that we have to pay for. So we, we know that as part of the situation of why we are now projecting to spend more than we did before, because ESER was taking care of some of those things. So, we are also in the process of looking at, what are the positions that were brought in under ESER that ESER is no longer funding, and do we still have some of those positions, which is kind of like back in the day of getting a grant, and then the grant ran out, "Well, you really like that program, do you keep the program and start paying for it yourself?" Or at some point, you have to cut that program. So, obviously, we, we need to look at those things. Um, but also in a projection, and, and you start talking about negotiations, part of that's built into those projections. So, we're, we're, we're building stuff in to what that revenue side is going to be.
Yeah, the expenditures, so when I, when I do a forecast, um, I build in, even beyond our negotiated agreements, I build in, uh, it's 2%, but it's, you know, that doesn't mean we have to give 2%, doesn't mean we only give 2%, but it's kind of a placeholder to show that increase.
Each year, right.
Each year. So that, so, so there is something in there already showing, that's why the expenditures are growing the way they are.
Those expenditures are going out, we also don't know what the state is gonna do. I mean, 78% of our money comes from the state of Ohio, so.
I was very conservative, because the state, um, revenue projections are, are what they projected for their revenue for the year, they're below their actuals, or below what they projected. So, I was very conservative in what increases we might get from the state, because I'm not sure where they're going to be financially.
Well, I think some of that, too, was started under Ms. Delafour, and Mr. Hayner was here, obviously, that we were looking at class size, we're starting to look at class sizes and scheduling, and those things were already started to be talked about, you know, a year ago.
Yeah, and they're still doing, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
Doing that.
So hopefully, we can continue that work on, because I think she was bringing up, we got three kids in a class, or five, and it might not be economically sound for those classes to continue, if I remember those discussions, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's, I think there's several factors that, that play into this, and I think it's, it's good to have conversations about that, we gotta plan, we gotta start looking at things. Um, it's all body efficiencies. Um, and I think with negotiations coming up here in the spring, too, I think timing is everything, right? So, everything has to be planned together. I mean, you know, looking at programming, aligning programming across the district, some centralization rather than decentralization. Um, I think enrollment, I think some of the procedures and practices that we put in place, um, simply as an exit interview, as a new withdrawal process, paying attention to the numbers, ensuring that staff is engaged in that process, customer service, all of those things play into enrollment. Some of those change in practices, I'm hoping to see we sustain or we increase. So I think that's really important as well. I think, um, staffing levels is really important, and I think the design of the master schedule and ensuring that we are efficiently designing the master schedule at the high school level is really, really important as well, and I think there's a lot of room for improvement for that. Um, I also think staffing levels and how, um, that's been done in the past, there's some room for improvement in that.
Yeah, I think that's the area she was starting to tackle.
Yeah.
Mr. Hayner was here, so, uh, yeah, so she, she was someone that recognized as well as you, as being, you know, new, so.
And we're continually looking at courses and how many kids are enrolled in that course, do you need that course, so that's happening still.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, this isn't sneaking up on you.
No.
So that's what I want the public to know, that the numbers are what they are, but they're a projection, and we're on it, so.
And we, we have been having these discussions, I mean, not, I just wanna see if we can get some sort of, some plans right after that negotiation on what...
Yeah.
Where you guys think we should be going, and in what direction, before it's way too late.
I think it's all fluid, it's all moving together.
Correct.
It's all part of the process. On the flip side, I think we have to recognize that we have a teacher shortage, which, um, also a teacher shortage, um, is contagious through the system, meaning transportation shortage, meaning at some point, you'll have an administrative shortage, and that, when you have that, you have to pay attention to what the market's paying, and, you know, um, I don't know what that's gonna look like at this point, but we gotta be very cognizant of that, because if we don't take that seriously, um, some of the retention efforts that we're putting in place that's built in our strategic plan will fail. So there's, I think there's a lot of strategy that goes around that as well.
Well, and I think, that's why I think we need to revisit this after the negotiations, because we'll, we'll know where we're at, because we have to take, uh, we have to take taking care of our staff seriously. I mean, there's just no way around it. They, I think they've been ignored on that level far too long, uh, meaning their outcries for certain things that I don't think are unreasonable, haven't been taken care of, and it's time we take care of them. Uh, and that obviously affects all that, so.
And here's the reality, too. So we have 81% of our money being spent on personnel. I can remember when that was as high as 85%, but we are in a people-dominated business.
Yes.
Education is people-dominated. And as much as I love technology, technology does not teach, technology does not love children. So, we are in a people-centric business, and if we don't take care of our people, then we're gonna lose a whole lot more. Pillars mean nothing if we don't take care of our staff and our children.
Well, and we, uh, school districts are in a place that we've never been before in the last few years, and it's getting worse, a little worse every year. And universities are not providing teachers like they used to. And so, uh, that's what's caused, it's supply and demand, it's a simple supply and demand. So, uh, we have to be cognizant of that, and I, I would say that, um, 81% is where we're at in terms of where our allocation has gone to staff, 80% is the magic number, we're only 1% above that. And I would say this district has, historically, the board's done a nice job operating, being at 81% when there hasn't been new, new money, it sounds like, since 89, I think that's what you said.
It's roughly around there, yeah.
Yeah, so, that's impressive, that's impressive. So, um, I don't think, I, my experience, I've seen budgets a heck of a lot worse than this.
Yeah.
And I would also tell you, um, that across the state, because ESER dollars have been taken away from districts, there are districts that are in a much worse position than us. Matter of fact, I will tell you, um, I would estimate 60 to 75%, if not more, are in a worse financial condition than what Marion City Schools is currently. And based on the budget, um, that we have yearly top rate on, uh, I think we're on a 25 million cash balance right now. I would say most superintendents, most treasurers, well, I don't know about treasurers, but superintendents will tell you, we're sitting pretty good. So.
The sky is not falling. It is not.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I wanna make sure that everybody knows the sky's not falling. There's a lot of strategy that goes with this, and, and, uh, we, I've dealt with budgets multiple times, it's much more challenging than this, so.
But we're not trying to get into that challenging, you know, leaning on that part of your experience. We just wanna make sure the board would like to have something after, I think I'm asking for the board to have something after that MEA, so we can attack it and make sure our priorities align with Superintendent the Treasurer, the districts, uh, what we would like to see as well, so that we know going forward. So we're on it. I mean, we have been, and there's been discussions, I understand that, but making sure that we're seeing something and moving somewhere at the beginning of, or spring of next year after those negotiations, but, so.
Thank you.
I, I need a motion.
Yeah, a motion to approve that five-year forecast, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Swonger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weibling?
Yes.
Uh, item six is a hearing of the public, I didn't get anybody filling anything out, that doesn't mean anyone. Okay. Item seven, the agenda confirmation. Um, any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none. Item seven B, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weibling?
Yes.
Ms. Swonger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Uh, item eight, old business, there's none listed. Item nine, we did nine A under the superintendent's report, nine B, uh, nine C, nine D. I believe nine E was pulled for next board meeting, is that correct, Mr. Superintendent?
That's correct.
Nine F was already taken care of. We're to nine G, uh, Mr. Superintendent.
Yeah, nine, uh, nine G is requesting board action to support the reappointment of Leslie Schneider to, uh, the Marion Public Library Board of Trustees. Um, the Marion City School District Board of Education has appointing authority, um, and the request is the reappointment, um, again, of Leslie Schneider. Uh, we did receive a letter, uh, from Gary Branson, the Executive Director, Fiscal Officer, Marion Public Library, requesting this. It states that Leslie's dedication, expertise, and commitment to our community have been invaluable assets to the board. And then there is a letter, um, that we received from Leslie as well, um, in support of that. Also states that Leslie serves on several boards, Board of Trustees for Marion Public Library, she's President of the Marion Rotary Club, she's a member of League of Women Voters, Women's Business Council, Women's Club Home, ADA, MH Suicide Prevention Coalition, Family Children First Council, MAWAC, and the Childcare Coalition, Coalition Leadership Team.
And she's also a former member of this board and former president. I'd make a motion to reappoint Leslie.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weibling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swonger?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Miss Dyer.
Mrs. Dyer. Oh my goodness, sorry.
Uh, nine H, transportation and lieu payment, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is from a parent that's requesting payment in lieu for reimbursement for the 2021, 22 school year and the 22, 23 school years, so it'd be retroactive. Um, there was a resolution passed by the board on August 7th, 2023, uh, providing that payment in lieu, uh, for the 23, 24 school year. Uh, since then, we have researched this to ensure that those students, um, just two children, were enrolled in the school during that same period of time. All the information has come back and facts-checked, uh, so request an action for the board to, um, pay out that, uh, payment in lieu to this parent.
Okay. This was previously being worked on, I think, too, right? Before you got here?
Yeah, before I got here, I kind of walked into it.
I think Ms. Delafour was working on this.
She was working on it, and, and all the information came to me, and I just kept it rolling.
Correct.
Yep.
I'll do a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weibling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swonger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Item nine I, overnight trip, Harding High School basketball cheerleading.
Yeah, this is a overnight trip, looking for approval from the board. Uh, it's from the varsity basketball cheer coach, uh, trip to Harbor Creek High School near Pennsylvania. It's a basketball tournament, and the JV and the varsity cheer athletes would be going there to, um, obviously perform on the sidelines to support the boys' basketball games in a very large tournament, uh, that's there. Um, I also will just point out that the cost is estimated $50 per athlete, uh, which the athletes are paying, the athletes and the families are paying themselves. Any extra cost will be covered by the cheer fund, and they will be, uh, working through, if need be, with the athletic, or with the boosters to do that.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
We're sending the basketball team, we might as well send the cheerleaders with them.
You would think, right?
Agreed.
Yes.
It's an excellent opportunity for them. Uh, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Swonger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weibling?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
I'm gonna have to stay. It's my sister making the, the motion, so. Item ten A, Huddle Up, Mr. Superintendent.
Yeah, this is a agreement contract with Huddle Up. It's a, um, they provide services around clinical services for speech and evaluation for our IEPs and IP services. Typically a position that speech and language pathologists would do. Uh, this has been a position that the district has historically struggled to fill, a lot like a lot of other districts, uh, not just in the county, but throughout the state as well. We also currently, um, have other contracts that provide very similar services. Ones with CASA Speech, E-Speech, McKinney and Monte. And, uh, doing an assessment, um, and looking at costs associated with these different organizations compared to Huddle. It was in the best interest of the district to contract with Huddle for the price point. In addition, Huddle, um, none of these companies right now could offer us this position. However, Huddle feels that within a ten-week period, they are gonna find somebody, uh, to provide these services to the district. I will tell you in the contract, if they fail to find somebody in ten weeks, then the contract is null and void, uh, as well. And so I would be requesting, um, that the board take action on this contract for that reason.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item eleven is executive session, does anybody feel the need to go to an executive session before the consent agenda? Hearing none. Item twelve, any amendments to the consent agenda? Amendments. Item thirteen A, consent calendar approval. Recommended action, all matters under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion in the form listed below. The board will follow Board Policy one six five point one, section E, in regards to the consent agenda. Superintendent recommends approval of all consent agenda items. Employment is specifically conditioned upon and subject to successful background checks, receipt and final administrative review of all application records, and receipt of all other necessary documentation. Thirteen B. Through.
N.
Google it.
N. N as in Nancy.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question right here, where, when I was looking at this, what does this mean? A crossover?
That's the bus that can.
So, she's going both? Okay.
Any further, Ms. Dyer? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Uh, item fourteen, nothing was removed, so that doesn't apply. Item fifteen, board announcements. The informal work session on the second will be at Haze and then we'll be back here on the sixteenth for December regular meeting. Item sixteen is the committee reports. I will turn it over to Ms. Dyer right now for still to check.
So these are our final two schools that we have to, Haze and Harding. Have we done everybody who were talking about them?
The work session.
Yeah, yes, these are the final two.
Yep.
There, there was talk about going to the bus garage also for a work session. I don't know if we, there was talk about going to the bus garage for a work session. I don't know if we wanted to do that or not. I know that it was talk about it at one time.
Jake would be up for it.
So.
We might do that, I mean, that would bleed into January of next year, so. You got enough heat out there?
Only a little.
All right.
Oh gosh. There might be more heat than there is in here right now.
So.
All right, could, Ms. Dyer, committee report?
So I had the pleasure today of spending some time with robotics class at Grant. I saw all over social media what a wonderful, um, experience that was, Mr. Ratliff. It's my understanding that you were there and the parents were.
I was there as a parent, Ms. Dyer.
I know.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't, yeah. I know you were there as a parent and I saw your daughter today. But anyways, um, the, that room is amazing when you go in there. I mean, it's, the kids are engaged, the instructors, Mrs. Kramer and Mr. Moore. I mean, they ask questions and, um, the kids just stop in their, stop in their tracks and then they go to their bots, bots. And, um, go to their bots and, and try to figure out what, uh, the answer to their questions were. And then, I like at each station, if they were stuck, uh, they would turn the TV on and then there's a visual for the kids to actually then try to problem solve. I thought that was really amazing. It was so energetic, uh, in that room. So I, I told them that today I was going to, um, I wanna read something that Mrs. Kramer wrote, but I also wanted to, um, if I can, uh, beg your indulgence for just a minute to recognize the robotics teams list. The eighth graders, Cohen Adams, Mason Bouquet, Quincy Carter, Kenley Cruz, Cheyenne Dempsey, Oliver Gathney, Charlotte Gruber, Lexi Kress, Delia Masarios, Bellamucha, Seth Stage, Noel Stidham, um, Avalon Tway, Sophia Vogel, Ariana Williams, and then the seventh grade, Audrey Anderson, Brayden Brooks, Bryson Brooks, Samuel Bunker, Xander Butler, Mackenzie Carpenter, Devon Claiborne, Deacon Duran, Cruz Gibson, Ryan Harper, Finn Harbor, Sophia Henderson, Emma Hogan, Hudson Holsinger, Benjamin Horn, Mia Hypes, Jacoby Jones, uh, he was very shy. Gatlin Lavenia, uh, Bradley Paz, London Ratliff, Maddie Richards, Kenneth Shadley, Nolan Vansicle, Jace Webb, um, John Wilds, Carson Willauer, and Emma Yost. So, um, they were also very pleased at, um, some of the winners of this tournament. They were first-year robotics competitors, first year. And for them to blow it out of the water like that, um, they were very pleased. So, um, we also have our board pens, so if anybody is available tomorrow to go, they need like thirty-five of these, so I thought if you were available, you can go in. And their class is eleven-eleven, so, and they're very anxious to show you what they know.
We might need forty, we might need forty-five.
Forty-five?
Yeah, I know we have one of the parents, isn't there forty-five? Yeah. I think there's. Yeah, I think there's forty-five.
She told me thirty-seven, I thought, um, but you think it's forty-five?
I think, I think it's forty-five.
Your daughter was one? Was your daughter, what's her name?
Bella.
And she was very shy.
She is.
But she was, man, I tell you, she was intent on, and they were doing this thing where they were shooting a basket. So their bots were, um, the whole idea was to shoot this basket and then if it didn't make it in, then they had to figure out all the dimensions. And I just said, hey, I would never have done this when I was going to school.
Correct.
You know, so I was at a conference recently and, um, our kids are right up there with what is happening statewide. Our kids are there. So it was a privilege to, to be in that classroom and they're always, um, wanting people to come and see what they're doing. And everybody's engaged and then half of them go to lunch and they don't even miss a beat. They just keep going. And then they come back in and some of the kids wanted to eat lunch there. They don't even go to the cafeteria, they're gonna hurry up and eat their lunch so they can get back to the robotics lesson, which I thought was amazing. Then the eighth grade go and then they come back and the teachers are so committed because Mrs. Kramer, I don't even think she takes lunch, you know, she's in there with the kids and doing some great things, so, um.
Yeah, speaking on that tournament, the, the tournament was at North Union. The gym, they had one side was completely packed with parents. There was thirty-seven middle school teams. There was also elementary teams, unfortunately, we don't have an elementary team, so hopefully we can figure out how to do that. But there was thirty-seven, uh, middle school teams, all ten of our team, we took ten teams. So every team had at least four members, but we took ten teams, all ten made the top twenty, which was the finals. So going into the final round, uh, our teams were sitting first, second, third, sixth, ninth, eleventh, thirteenth, fourteenth, sixteenth, and twentieth. So we had, eight of our teams were in the top fifteen of thirty-seven, like right off the rip, with all teams making the finals. So it was pretty impressive seeing our kids out there. Interesting enough, in the finals, uh, I think my daughter's on one team, her daughter's on another team. They have to cooperate in the finals to score as many points as they can. The most impressive thing that I saw, I think, all day was in the finals, there was a discussion about, uh, points. And our kid, uh, I think Seth led the charge. Seth argued with a group of referees, about four or five adults, that they had scored the points and they were challenging. He knew the rule, where to find it, how they scored, and they end up awarding the points to win the match due to his arguments. So it was very impressive to see, uh, these little seventh and eighth graders arguing with a bunch of, like, five referees and winning.
Like the future attorney of basketball.
Very good arguments he was making because he was awarding the points. And he, they were doing this, um, arguing with the officials, I guess, or point, making their points to the officials in front of the entire gymnasium. And that was all that was happening at the time, they actually took extra time to even look up the rules. So our kids knew the rules and referees are having to look it up and figure it out, is that not, yeah, I mean, that's what happened. It was impressive, very impressive.
Three of our teams are going to Wright Pat or in March.
I think three did qualify for the state tournament, so, of, of the ten. And then there's also other tournaments coming that the other teams will have a chance to qualify, so.
And she said they even helped other, um, there were problematic kind of situations and she said our kids went over and they were helping other, other kids.
Yeah, I witnessed, witnessed myself, teams coming and asking them questions about their robots, them explaining what they're doing, sharing their knowledge with other teams to improve their team from a different school, allowing the other schools to take pictures of our robots, um, to show them, you know, what they were doing.
Right, and the one thing that, if you've never been to a robotics competition, the, the whole competition of VEX Robotics is cooperation and competition. You have to cooperate and you have to talk to the other team that you're, that you're working with because when you're in a round, you're working with that team to score as many points as you possibly can. You both get the same number of points and then you're also competing against them at the same time. But you have to work together and so it's, it's great life skills to see students talking to students from other schools that they have no idea who they are, but they're there for a common mission. And so that cooperation and competition is masterfully done in those robotics competitions.
And you're right, it is forty-five. And she said, while it's always fun to bring home the dub, what was more rewarding as coaches was the way our students represented Marion City at our competition. We had several coaches and judges from other teams approach us and tell us how our students helped younger teams work to fix another team's robot, were supportive, well-behaved, responsible, respectful. This is what really counts at the end of the day. She says, robotics is very intense, intellectual, and it's an emotional activity. If you have never been to a competition, you cannot imagine the number of highs and lows that these kids go through in an eight-hour period. It's a grind and our kids exceeded our high expectation. Mrs. Kramer writes, they are all champs in our opinion. And if you see any of these kids out and about, tell them congrats. And again, she extends that invitation. Um, and I brought a shirt, and this is one of the fundraisers that, that they do. And, um, of course, I'm thankful to be a Prexy. But, um, I think, um, one year they sold like beef jerky, one year, and she said in March they might do, I'm lucky to be a Prexy, so let's support them and these fundraisers if we can. And let's support them in the classroom. So it was a, it was a nice, um, addition to my day to point out that student achievement.
Yeah, they, they did fantastic, so.
Do you have forty-five there?
Yeah, with an extra five here, so, yeah, you got it.
Anything else in student achievement?
Are you going, are, will you be there to turn the go tomorrow?
I'll be at Mansfield all day tomorrow.
Anybody wanna go?
I mean, I, I can, I can go, I can make sure.
Eleven-eleven.
Yep.
Eleven-eleven.
Eleven-eleven, all right. I'll make, I'll get it there.
All right, so we'll give those to him.
Anything else in student achievement? Anybody else with a committee report?
Policy and personnel will, uh, begin to meet on the first Monday of every month, so we are consistent with that. Just putting that on everybody's radar moving forward, so.
I think athletics, the extracurricular committee, I guess, is better now. I think we went over last time what is, uh, curricular versus maybe non-curricular, I think we were sending.
Extracurricular.
Yep. And that was getting reviewed by the superintendent at some point, um, to kind of determine that. That's where we were with that.
Just buildings and grounds update, we spent this month discussing some of the safety protocols that we'll be, um, reviewing in December as a district. So, um, more to come there. I know Jake was working on some end of the, the year, uh, jobs and then also getting that roof repaired over at Grant. So, um, appreciate your assistance there, Jake. I didn't miss anything. Did you see the minutes on that, Ms. Dyer?
I did. Also curriculum met, we will be meeting the second Tuesday, second Monday of every month. And we had a over two-hour meeting because we had a little catching up to get done. But we received flow charts for everybody in the department and who's responsibility, you know, who does what and where they are. We also got access to the hub, which is a place where we can go and access any information that we need. We went over district leadership, district goals, school, school goals, times, timelines for that. We went over the state personnel development grant, Title I stuff, so a gifted update, twenty-first century programming update, third grade state testing. And then we did a few other things, um, Mr. Murphy talked about the withdrawal process. So we talked about that and then scheduling for the middle school, high school. So it was a long meeting, but it was a very informative and very good meeting. On finance committee, uh, we met with finance committee and we had a much more in-depth look at the five-year forecast, then this was the quick overview, so we had a much more intensive look at that.
That was a couple hours to it.
So, yeah, that was, good meetings. Good, good productive meetings, yeah, they've sometimes been long, but, but good and productive, so.
Anything legislative?
Why, yes.
Other than eliminating the federal Department of Education.
So I went to OSBA and at OSBA conference, I, I went to a couple different legislative sessions for OSBA. And just, if, if, number-wise, so the Ohio General Assembly right now is in their lame duck session. They've got about another week before they, there are a hundred and ninety bills that could possibly impact public education that are now sitting at the Ohio General Assembly. So one hundred and ninety.
Have you summarized those for us?
So, so the big issue, the big issue actually is this because they have so many. It's, OSBA is really paying attention because what they may do is sign a bill that they think is gonna pass. So we know, we talked, we had the presentation about Senate Bill twenty-nine and all the implications. So they're gonna fix, put the fixes in for that, so they know that will pass because the fixes are coming. So then what will happen is they will take other things and just kind of put other things in there with it because they know it's gonna pass. The one thing that, um, so House Bill. The one thing that, so House Bill 183, which was referred to as the bathroom bill, went in with Senate Bill 104, and that has actually already passed the Ohio General Assembly, and I believe is waiting on Dewine's signature. He has indicated that he will go ahead and sign that, and that's the one that basically says that we as a school district have to have exclusively male and female restrooms, and so you have to use the restroom of your biological gender in terms of restroom, showers, and locker rooms. It prohibits schools and ESCs from permitting members of female biological sex to share overnight accommodations with males and the same vice versa, so if you, on these trips that we have, we have to make sure that those are separated out. There are some provisions that go with it also, it's not a law yet, but probably will be, but OSBA is just keeping an eye on and watching all the things, but there will probably be more things coming out very soon that impact education.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Okay, just making sure. Item 17, there's nothing listed. Item 18, anything, Mr. Superintendent, under policy ratings or anything?
No, I think another successful meeting. I appreciate all the board members, appreciate the cabinet personnel, any other staff that are here tonight. Future's bright, we keep getting better each and every day, so look forward to a continued successful year.
Item 19, any reason to go into executive session for anybody?
Yeah, I think we need to.
Okay. What, oh, I think it probably has to do with one. Item one, the board, Mr. Guyer's making a motion to go into executive session regarding the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual. You're making the motion?
I am.
I'll second. Any discussion on that? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swongar?
Yes.
Are you going to ask for any motion, any business afterwards? Okay. So there, we're going to go into executive session, it's 7:32, there'll be no action taken after this, other than adjournment for those that want to leave. Thank you, thank you for everyone attending.